Well, um, I guess background wise, I just wanted to say, um, you and Jen both had very strong surveys. And um, that's why we wanted to do interviews with you guys, just as kind of a tiebreaker. Uh, so the way that I guess it's gonna work is just that everybody who's here, that's a member. Um, who has any questions, um, can ask, ask you the questions and um. And then beyond that, um, I guess you can just do an.
I'm sorry, can you hear me, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I can, but I, but I had to, it made me re-log in, so I missed some of what you said.
Okay. Well, pretty much I was just saying that you did a really good job on the survey and so did Jen, and so we're doing. The interview as a tiebreaker, um, so that we can decide, um, which you to endorse and. Um, definitely recommending honestly that whoever gets endorsed wins and that whoever, um. Doesn't get endorsed, like, you know, uh, just continues to persist in being awesome and tries to do it again. Um, cause we just had such good applications from you guys and, um. So yeah, this is kind of like the tiebreaker, I guess. So, um, Jen and you are both doing, uh, an interview and we're just gonna ask. Whatever questions we have. And I'm also gonna give you an opportunity, um, either opening, like opening and closing remarks, I guess, so. Um, to kind of prompt opening remarks, um, what do you think makes you the best candidate for this race?
Well, I definitely have experience in the classroom and in the school system. That my opponents don't have, and I know that I am experiencing the things. That are affecting our children the most right at the level that they're at, right in the trenches every single day. And so I'm seeing and experiencing the repercussions from the decisions that are being made. On our board currently, and I know the things that we need to do from the day that I'm elected. To be able to hit the ground running, to make some really positive changes in our school system. And I have the ability, because of my classroom experience and understanding our system and the way that it currently works. I know where the issues are. I know the things that are causing problems for our students that are creating the, um. The hurdles for them that are keeping them from being able to be good readers. I know the things that are happening in our system that are. Um, bringing in a woke agenda, and I have had to deal with those, uh, head on and, and I've been. Actually, I have personal experience in having to stand up and just say, this isn't right and I won't do it. Even at risk of losing my job. And so, um. So that experience gives me a different, a different ability, um. To really see what needs to happen in our system and to be able to quickly work to make the changes that need to be made.
Well, awesome. Um, so then I guess I'm just gonna open it up to, um, any questions that our participants are gonna have and. I have just one question honestly, and it might be kind of a quick interview as far as interviews go for us. Um, but does anybody, any of the members on the call have a question for Karen?
Yeah, I, I got one real quick. Hi, um, hold on, let me turn my camera on so you know who's talking to you. Hi Karen, uh, my name is. I'm good. Um, so I, I've heard you speak before. I was wondering, cause I don't necessarily know, uh, all of your background. I know that you are a teacher. Um, what level are you teaching and, and what are some of the biggest issues that you're seeing? Um, more regularly, I won't necessarily say on a daily basis, but more regularly than other issues.
Yeah, so I currently teach sixth grade world history, so I teach at the middle school level. I taught ten years in kindergarten before that and years ago I taught in high school. That was tech, that was technically my degree was secondary social science education. And, um, but that was before I had my children and stayed home with them for a little while and so. Um, so I've been in kindergarten, now I'm in middle school. And the things that I'm seeing are, are very concerning and I saw things in kindergarten that concerned me. I had to deal with issues. Um, you know, starting with our books back in two thousand eighteen, where I was seeing, um, some of the books that were being pushed into the challenges. That were, that are the Florida Youth Literacy Association. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, but they, um. They do book challenges for our children that are pushed into our, our, our public school libraries. Um, and they're supposed to encourage them to be reading, but they're pushing books into these challenges. That are opening our children up to, um, ideas that they wouldn't normally have if they weren't reading these books. And because they're being done as challenges, parents are often not aware of what's in them because parents are trusting that the school. Um, is, is doing what's in the best interest of their child. And so, starting way back then, I had to challenge some books. That were, that we had to move off of shelves in our, in our, in my school library because. Um, they weren't appropriate for kindergarten and first and second grade or even middle school children, but they certainly weren't appropriate for primary. Grade levels, especially without a parent's consent. And so, that is something even in kindergarten that I dealt with. Then now in middle school, um, I, uh, for anyone who on this call, I don't know who, I don't know everyone who's on the call, but. But if you, um, have heard me speak, you know that I, um. A couple of years ago, I had a student brought to me and I was told that I needed to refer to that student by a different name and pronouns and that was. A, a district level, uh, somebody from the district who, who brought that child to me and. So my, I, I, I was horrified and, and just, and, and you know, I teach in Plant City. I, I, I began, became a teacher. Because I love children. I want to see them grow and learn and reach the potential that they have and. Um, and so that request, what, it opened my eyes to the fact that this, this wasn't just trying to come in. But it was here in our schools and if it was in Plant City where I've been teaching for so long. And with students that I love and a community that I love and serve, um, then it is all over Hillsborough County and that it is, um. Uh, it is, has, has embedded itself in our school system. And so I see that. I had to stand up against that. I had to stand up to the district when they told me that I could lose my job and. Because of what the governor and our state legislators have done in the last year, they have done a lot to protect our students. And even teachers. And so the conversation would have been a little different this year, but the problem is in our administration and in our current board. There are people who have this agenda and, um, and they have, uh, my opponent has voted. Four times in favor of the pride proclamation and what that has done is opened up the door. For anyone with an agenda to be able to prey on our children or groom them to just have, um, a, a welcome, a welcome door. And so I'm aware of that. I see it. There are also some other things that are happening in our schools because we use. Because many of our board members, they, um. I mean, we're, we're, we are blessed to have a couple, two board members that, that I would love to be able to help. So that we can, we can move in a different direction, but, um, five of our board members are, are. They are a fan of restorative practices and the restorative practices, the idea behind it is that. Students should have exceptions made for their behavior based on any number of exceptionalities that they have. Whether it be exceptionalities in their I E Ps, um, exceptionalities in their, um. Exceptionalities in their socioeconomic status and their race and, in what they consider now their, their gender. Um, their gender preference. Um, any of those exceptionalities can be things that. That excuse behaviors that they have. So we're also seeing an increase in violence in our schools. In, um, disorderly conduct in children who are, who are, who are not even focused on learning when they're at school because they're. Misbehaving, they're, they're disrespectful, they're defiant, they're, um, they're assaulting other students and, and teachers and staff members. And yet they come to school every day. There's not a consequence because there's an excuse that allows them to get away with that behavior. And you know, my opponents would say, well, it's not an excuse for their behavior, but we have to find other ways to deal with those behaviors. But, um, I mean, I could go into, I could go into so many things that, that, that we're dealing with in our classrooms. But the problem is that because we're not addressing and bringing the consequences that, that need to be brought to those behaviors, we're excusing them. And these same students have been learning since they were in preschool even sometimes. Um, that these, that there's nothing that a teacher can do or an administrator can do about their behavior. So they just behave any way that they want to. And it creates an environment in our school that is hostile toward learning. And where even great students who would normally do well, sometimes struggle because they're in an environment that is toxic. And where the bar has not been raised and so, uh, so you know, for children who. Um, are on a, on a regular basis assaulting each, you know, other students or, or staff or teachers or they are. Um, or bringing drug paraphernalia to school or even weapons to school or defying teacher instructions or. Or cussing out teachers and using profan- profanity and, um, throwing, um, throwing. School furniture and defacing school property. When these students are allowed to come back to school day after day. Without any consequences for their behaviors, what it tells the other students is that there is no standard and so. If I don't do my homework, it doesn't really matter. If I talk back to my teacher or I get mouthy with my teacher, it doesn't really matter because I don't bring drugs to school. If I, um, if I don't, if I don't adhere to dress code, it doesn't really matter because my teacher. Because my teacher has to deal with this other kid who's, um, you know, hitting students in the classroom. So it just totally lowers our bar. And when we look at the fact that we have more D N F schools in Hillsborough County than any other district in Florida. And we have, um, more than fifty percent of our students are below proficiency in reading. We have to do better. We have to raise the bar for what we expect of our students and I understand the policies in our school. I, I've been in it. I understand our policies. I know how they work and I know where we need to implement policies as a board. That will raise the bar for what's expected of our students and hold students accountable for behavior. And that does include holding parents, um, accountable when their students are, when their children are. Um, are continually, um, doing things that, that are not acceptable, um, at school, you know, it. There's, there's been a, this is what happens in the school system. This, this is actually said, well, we can't involve the parents because the parents are working, their parents have this, the parents, there's always a, a different. Extenuating circumstance often based on the I E P or the exceptionality that says also we can't involve the parents in this, but. As soon as we really do start involving parents and saying, hey, you know, your child's not behaving, will you please come and sit in your child's class? If you want your child to be able to attend school today, we need you to come and sit in their class and see what their, see what their behavior is like or, or. You're gonna have to, um, to have this child, you're gonna have to figure out how to fix the behavior of your child because your child is not complying with school policy. So we have to be able to set standards and that is what is not happening in our school. So, so. It is, and it is also allowing a vacuum where people who have agendas that are poisonous for students. To come in because there's, because the environment is so chaotic that it allows people. Who wanna create safe spaces and they want to introduce kids to all kinds of other things. Because, because we're losing the good teachers, because good, any, any good teacher who is, um, worth their salt. Uh, can't put up with that environment, uh, uh, because it's, because it's, it's not healthy. Um, and so we're actually allowing right now, the way our system is, we are allowing students to be abused in our classrooms basically. Because they are, they are, um, exposed to behaviors over and over again that desensitize them to, um. To behaviors that should shock them, but by the time they're even in, even sometimes in elementary school. They're already desensitized to some of these behaviors that used to be shocking. And so, um, so, so I consider that abuse. I didn't, I consider it abusive when we allow our students over and over to be exposed to that behavior and we as the professional adults. Do not do something about it to protect them. And so I could go on and on about things that I see in the school on a regular basis. Um, and things that have happened to me personally, even in my classrooms and, 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 um. And I am a great teacher. I have, I'm always highly effective and I, and I work hard to do the things. That are right for students and good teachers do that, but now we're seeing a vacuum of, of teachers with an agenda. Because, because we're losing good teachers and it's not because of money and that's another thing. Um, I, I know this might be outside of what your question was, but, but you know, our district's answer to a lot of these problems is, oh, if we just had some more money. That would solve the problem, but the problem, that problem is separate and we, um, so they're trying, you know, they've now proposed. To put the tax referendum on the ballot and to, um, have people vote to raise the mileage rate and I, I, I know that was very presumptuous. That was, um, they, they have not done what they should have already in our, um, in our budget. To really have transparency and to really, um, line item some of the things that I've even asked about over the years. How much is this costing our district? And you never can get, uh, an answer for those questions and so. Um, so they're trying to throw money at a problem instead of actually doing the thing that is going to prevent. Um, the behaviors that we're seeing and encourage our students to have a higher expectation, to know that when they come to school. They are coming with the, for the purpose of learning, um, and, and that they are there, that that's their job when they're there. Is to be learners and to be ready for that, to be ready and prepared for that. So, um, I don't know if, I, I hope that answered your question. I know that, that's probably a lot and it kind of went off of topic, but, um, but there is a lot. I, I could go on about different things that I have seen in the schools, everything from, uh, from furniture being destroyed. I had a whole, I had a whole classroom, um, that was torn apart by a child who would, it would have shocked you. But, um, but it, but it, but it's common behavior unfortunately.
Yeah, I, I personally do a lot of work in criminal justice reform. We talk about the school to prison pipeline and it sounds like. The way that they've combated the school to prison pipeline is just not getting them in trouble anymore. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of what it seems like when, when you're talking about that. So I appreciate the answer. I do have a couple more questions, but I will open it up to other people and then we can come back around to me if anybody else has any questions.
Sure, um, and I'll open up the floor. Actually, we'll go around, um, is there anybody, uh, other than Lance that has a question that's in attendance right now?
I did, but she just answered my question.
Cool. Okay, I had a question too. I guess I'll, I'll ask my question. It's more like a puzzlement honestly, because we talked about this a little bit as a group. It took a little while to figure out what, what the answer meant. Um, we asked about the, um, two current examples. Of the most egregious federal, state or local overreach to constitutional powers and what's your proposed remedy to each? Um, so the overreach you said was D O E, making demands for E S E requirements. And the proposed remedy was state fight back and local policy that makes decisions to do is best for all students, not just to select you. I was wondering if you could kind of. Um, unpack the acronyms and, um, describe a little bit more, um, why, why that's important.
Yes, that is actually a crucial, um, i- i- and it, it is something that really impacts our schools on a regular basis. Uh, the, the federal legislation, um, just to give you one example, uh, there's, there's a, um. And I don't know if there's a certain acronym, or there, is there a certain acronym that you want me to, to explain?
Tell for anybody who might watch the recording later, um, what D O E stands for, what E S E stands for, just, you know, to be really.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. The Department of Education is D O E and E S E is exceptional student education. And then an I E P is an individualized education plan and there's, there's so, the, the educational system. Our, our system is, has been made so complex and really it should be simple, but, um, as a teacher. I see where, um, where it has been purposely made the way that it is so that they can. Um, try to make that, uh, be the reason and the excuse for being ineffective. Um, but, so let me explain. In the federal legislation, there is a clause. That says that, um, that every student is, ha- should have access. To the least restrictive environment. So, that unfortunately, I mean, that, that. Sounds like a great thing. It sounds like a great idea that every student that is in our system. Uh, has the right to the least restrictive environment, being that the environment that has the, um. That is the closest to a general education classroom, which would be your average classroom that every child would be in, that every, um. That every typical child would be in. So. So in this least restrictive environment, what has happened, even though that sounds great, is that people with an agenda. Have used that to basically hold the schools hostage locally because. A student may have any number of exceptionalities that are, um, diagnosed by psychologists, um, psychiatrists. Um, any number of school counselors or personnel and whatever is written up in their I E P for their accommodations. Um, or, or the accommodations being, um, let me make sure that I'm putting this. I, I wanna make sure you can understand what I'm saying. Um, that you, so, so, so be, based on those diagnoses. A student gets co- accommodations that the school or teacher have to provide for them by law. So, you might have a student who just has something simple like, um. Uh, a gap in their ability to read, uh, certain, may, maybe they're, maybe they're struggling with reading. And so you're trying to get them from one level of proficiency to the next level. Um, and, and maybe they're under proficiency or trying to get, so there'll, there will be certain accommodations made for them. But you also might have students who, they're, they're not just struggling readers, maybe they are, and, and maybe they don't just have a, a, a detention deficit. Or, but maybe they have something more severe. Maybe they're A S D, meaning that they are on the autism spectrum disorder. They're on that, they're on that spectrum. And so, there's any number of levels on that spectrum. And, but regardless of where that student is, because of that legislation. What's happened is people with an agenda have said, well, it doesn't matter how severe this child is, this child should still have access to the geneds. To the gen ed classroom. So you might have any number of exceptionalities in your classroom. You might have struggling readers, you might have, um, those who are struggling with attention and with, um, the inability to. Sometimes it's even impulse control that they're having a hard time with, but then you also will have, a- and usually all of those are also struggling readers. They're struggling in some way, so they're not at proficiency. But then you also have the ones that are, who aren't at proficiency. But they may have something more severe like their O D D, which is obstinate defiant disorder where they, they lash out and they. Um, defy orders and they become combative and they can become violent. Um, you might have. Um, also children who are A S D who have any number of, um, of man, of. Things that they do or things that they need in your classroom because some of them are non-verbal, some of them, um, have, you know. Spin or have different tics that they, that are just part of, of their behavior. And so you have all these different things. That are not necessarily, um, that the gen ed classroom is not really the place that can best meet those needs. Because they actually, because we all, we have plenty of, of, um, resources and classrooms in our district. And places in our district for students with exceptionalities that need special resources. But the gen ed class is not that, but what they're trying to do is make the gen ed class the place that all students. Because they don't wanna be in a restrictive environment, get to be. But what happens in that case is. The gen ed class already has students who are struggling to just stay at proficiency. That means they're not honors, uh, they're not in the honors classes, they're not in the fast tracks, they're not in the above four and five proficiencies. Sometimes they're, they're struggling to stay at a three or even to get to a three. So they're usually the ones and twos in the gen ed classrooms. A- as far as, and when I say ones and twos, I mean, in testing, they're, they're testing buckets for their proficiencies in their reading. And so what happens is then that classroom where your students already need more support, more help. More time and more attention to make sure that you're meeting their, each, each of their individual needs. Then on top of that, you have these students who really their needs would be better met in a resource classroom, but because of this legislation. They're being put in gen ed classrooms every day, all over our, our, our district. And it's causing the attention from the, from those who are already struggling, that you're already trying to get and help them. Um, and it just takes that, it's, it's just crazy and that, but that is something that is from the federal level. That's being used to, to, um, basically, um. I don't know how to say it, but, but, but basically ramrod our, our classrooms and, um. And they, and, and there are people who, as crazy as it is, I watched an E S E teacher. As sad as this is, put her finger in the face of an A P, an, uh, an administrator at our school. And tell him that he had no right to suspend a child that had, had. A multiple referrals and when I say multiple, I'm like in the twenties, you know, um, and. I, I, and she shook her finger in his face and said, you need to call that mother right now and get him back to this campus or you could be fired. This, this is the E S E, the exceptional student education department, telling an administrator at a school that he could be fired. For actually giving a consequence to a student who should have had a consequence months prior or years even prior. But anyway, it is, it, it's escalated to the point where, so, so that's the kind of issue that we're facing in our schools on a daily basis. In classroom after classroom and it is not uncommon. It's why we lose good teachers. Uh, and, um, and that's just one of the, that's just one of the simple things and to fight back, to fight back with that and to say, you know what? For us in Hillsborough County, if you wanna say that a student deserves the least restrictive environment, okay. But the least restrictive environment for this student is the best place for this student. And for the other twenty seven students that are going to be affected by the student's behavior in this classroom. So we're going to put this student in this student's least restrictive environment instead of in the gen ed classroom. And so we have to be able to fight as a district to make the right policy and to encourage lawmakers to stand up. And just say, yeah, in Florida, that's not gonna fly in our classrooms. In Hillsborough County, that's not gonna fly in our classrooms. Because that's not what's best for our children. That was a long way to, to, to describe that. It's a lot of things to, to explain.
Thank you. That was very informative. Um, and then Lance, you were saying that you had more questions?
Yeah, uh, just, I, I have two more questions. Uh, first one is, um, last year, I know during legislative session. They passed universal E S As and I wanted to know Karen, uh, what, if you thought that was a, a negative or a positive that we have those. Uh, universal E S As now.
Can you tell me, yes, what do you mean by that?
Educational savings accounts.
Oh, 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 yes, for, for being able to have school choice or being able to use, yes, okay, yes. I think. I am a proponent of all school choice. Of school, of people being able to use their tax dollars in the best way that is gonna be the best for their child. And so I think that's a great thing. I think, um, I, I think, I think what the public school system needs to do. Is see what's around and see what parents are going to, because parents are gonna take their children to where their children are, are safe. And where their children are educated well. And so, I am a proponent of parents having those choices. And I think that's a great thing. I think it's a great thing for our state and I ultimately, I think it's a great thing for our public schools. Because I think it's gonna cause our public schools to have to start consenting and, and conforming to what parents want. For their children instead of what the agenda that they've had for our children is, which is really to leave them uneducated. And, um, totally like robots basically that just do whatever is, um. Uh, that, that have no real, uh, thoughts and logical reasoning pattern because we don't even, we don't even teach in a logical way anymore. Um, which I would like to get back to teaching those basics, the classical learning with, with, you know, your grammar and your logic and your rhetoric. Where, where our students are really learning and having a good base in their education that we don't have right now and that we've skipped for so long. And that we need to, um, bring back and fill in for students who have missed and, and who we've, we've really done a disjustice and in service. And in, I mean, just really, um, we have students who have suffered as, as, um, from what we've done. From what we've done as a school system. And I think that having these choices for parents. What it does and the reason that the reason it makes the teachers unions mad is it because it it puts the light on the fact that the public system. Is failing so miserably. And so I think anytime. That we that the light is shown in that way to really show how poorly the public system is doing. I think that's a great thing because I think at this point, we can only come up if we will start, especially if we can. Win this seat and really change what is happening in the decisions on our board.
Thanks. That actually leads into my final question. So I did some work with the the ESA, so I appreciate your answer on that. And we did get a lot of pushback with the teachers union. So my last question is. With you running as a conservative for the school board, being a an employed teacher with the school district. How do you, have you gotten any pushback specifically from the the teachers union and how do you deal with that pushback when you do get that?
I'll tell you what, there has been nothing more stressful than these last months running for office as a teacher in our school system. I'm not allowed to talk about my campaign at all on campus, even though the teachers union, they can tout their the things that they support. But I am not allowed to and I have lost, you know, people who I've worked with that have. Basically, you know, they not, they know I'm not a union member and the union doesn't support me. And so they've. Sometimes there's a lot of tension because they don't, they don't see things the way that I do, but there's also really good news. Because there are a lot of teachers who aren't union members and who. And some who even are union members that are beginning to say, huh. If the union isn't standing behind her and she's seeing these crazy things that are happening in our schools every day. Then maybe I shouldn't be in the union. So it's so it's been very difficult, but. I think it's opening the eyes of a lot of people that I am around every day and. And it's stealing the people who who do support me that are in the system who haven't been members of the union and I've for years. Have encouraged especially conservative teachers. Because the union gets teachers by saying, they they have these scare task tactics. By saying, oh, if if you're not a member, then you're not protected from X, Y, and Z. You know, if this happens, then you don't have any protection. But. But that is their tactic. And when I've over the years convinced convinced so many teachers just to look. At who the unions support all the way to the top and every time you're giving your dues to the union. Look at the people that you're going to support when you give your dues. They. Always come back to me and are like, oh, my goodness, I didn't know all these years, that's what I was doing. And so I would love to see. Conservative voices be. More vocal in our school system because the unions, they have carte blanche to have the ear of. Of teachers and of staff and of district employees. But there is very rarely a voice that's allowed to be. Actually dissonance to that, you know, and so. So that is one of the things that I know would be really great and that a lot of teachers would be. Because because I do know that a lot of the teachers, good teachers really do want what's best for kids and they really do see the craziness in our system. They just don't pay attention to the politics of it all often, and so they don't realize where their money's going. And so. So I think that the more we can really get the the word out, this the union has already in our area had trouble getting membership. But I think we can do more to even to even help that. But but to answer your question, yes, it has been difficult. I have, yes, faced opposition and people who won't talk to me and people who. Who who literally were people that were. I I wouldn't have said that they were necessarily my friends, but they were definitely professional acquaintances that we talked and and now they do their best to to never. Be anywhere where they would have to to speak to me. But that's okay, because I know what's right and I know what I'm fighting for. And I know what's happening in our district and that's why I'm running. I I when I. You know, for for a couple of years, starting when I, when when I dealt with the stuff that I dealt with in kindergarten. Having to move books off the shelf, having to just say to parents, hey, I just want to make you aware that these are some things that are being offered to your children. Having to. Some other times that I've had to to message the district about things that they have in teacher trainings that they just have. Out as though they're. As as though they are. Data that has been counted, empirical data, but they're really not. They're data that the the. District has gotten from from student surveys. And but it has, but it took me some digging to because I because there was a back and forth. They didn't want to tell me where they got the data. They just, I'm like. Like, well, this isn't data you can just count. So where where is this? It's it's listed on a on a on a PowerPoint. For all teachers who are being trained in the district. But it's not like this other data. It's different and it's not, how did, where did you get that? And it it took. A lot of back and forth to even get an answer that that was where it was from, was from the student survey. And I was like. Well, you know, it's very disingenuous for you to say that to teachers as though you've counted something and it's from a student survey and you didn't even cite that in the training that it's from a student survey. Because then teachers would say, oh, it's from a student survey. They were sitting next to five friends while they were filling out this survey and whatever their friends said, that's what they said too. You know, then teachers would say, oh, okay, but I said, I said, it's very disingenuous that you would include that in a training as though it's empirical data when it's. When you clearly know it's not. And so then that has, so there are so many things over the years that I've addressed and and I. And I I know those things and I see them. And so for a couple of years, I'd been feeling like. I cannot, I can't keep going this way. This is craziness. It's absolutely, it's insanity and I don't want to be. Complicit in the abuse of children in the classroom and not say anything as as adult, as the adult professional. And so when I really felt like I needed to run and like the Lord, the Lord was telling me, I don't know if anybody's a believer or not, but I am a believer and. The Lord was telling me that it was time for me to do something. And then when the student was brought to me. I I'd kind of been ignoring that, like, Lord, I don't even know what to do to do anything like that, to run for an office. I don't know how to do that. When that student was brought to me, it was like confirmation. The Lord was like saying, I've shown you all these things. You see all the things going on in the system. You know how the system works. When are you going to do this? And so then, anyway. Last summer in in July, I was re-listening to one of the board meetings that I'd already listened to. And and I just drove downtown and I filed to run. And so that's that's. And and so I've never done this before and it is hard and there and I have. I I will not, I will tell you, this is the hardest thing I've ever done, but I know that it's right and I know that it's worth it. And I know that our children deserve somebody who's fighting for them. Because I think people see the school board as. They don't really even think about it, actually, and they don't think about how important the decisions that are made there and the policy that's made there and how that affects our children. But over two hundred and twenty thousand children in our district are affected by that policy and. And I care about that. And so. Anyway, so so it here we are. Fighting the fight.
Well, I appreciate that and thank you so much for answering my questions. That's all the questions that I had. So Lily, if you have anything else, I'm I'm all set. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Well, I had one more question, I guess. Fill in a little bit blank for me. My mom is actually one of the kind of like more prominent advocates for homeschooling. And so if you're going to get a question for me, it might might be a homeschooling one. Which is why we had that on the survey too, actually. And I guess my question was, one thing that I didn't ask, which is just kind of like, maybe even in some ways can. Kind of prompt me to to have you speak live and and stuff a little bit more about like your understanding of the homeschooling and and the interface between the public school system. Supposing that, for instance, homeschoolers weren't even taxed for public education. What would you think about the idea of. A homeschool family seeing something that was exceptional in the public school system and opting in for a single class? And pay maybe like paying how whatever the costs associated with the with the class and then just opting in for that single class.
Sure. So you're so you're saying if they weren't paying the tax, if they were getting a tax break for being a homeschooler because they're not. Using the school system, the public school system, that then if they decided they wanted to participate in something in the school system that they. Had the option of paying for that. Is that what you're asking?
That's right. Reimbursing the expenses and just fitting in just that one.
Yeah, I think that would be a great thing. And I know currently homeschoolers. While while homeschoolers pay taxes at this point. That, you know, homeschoolers have have access to be able to take a class here and there if they want to or to or to participate in sports and. But I think absolutely, I think it would be. I think it would be definitely a something that would, I mean, to be able to pay for the class would definitely be an option. If now I will say this, that's usually at the high school level where where that happens. I guess it could happen at the middle school level, but I know a lot of times when when, from my experience, I know lots of homeschoolers and I homeschooled my boys when. They were young. And a lot of. People use the the classes, especially in high school level, because that's where sometimes parents want to make sure that they're not. You know, if if there's a certain math class that they don't feel comfortable, they want or they want to make sure their child gets that math class. Or if there's an elective class, a lot of times I know a lot of homeschoolers who used. Classes at in high school for certain electives that their children wanted to take that they didn't really have access to give them an opportunity for somewhere else. And so I think that's a perfectly viable option to be able to pay for that specifically. I know right now, of course, they do that, but I also know that. Another option for high school students is to be able to dual enroll and and be able to take a lot of their courses in. So that they actually get college credit for it as well. So that's another great option. And that is actually. You know, of of. When I say free, I know it's, I know it's, you know, dollars, but but it's free to the student. So. Yeah, but but I think that's a great option. I think that's great for kids.
Thank you. That was my last question. Is there any other participant in the chat that has a question for Karen? Okay. Hearing none. Do you have any closing remarks for the group?
Thank you, first of all, for taking the time to be here to listen. For some of you, I I guess I could have looked and seen names because I didn't really. I I'm, I didn't do that. But. Let me. Oh, now I need to close up. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate you taking the time to be to to be here on the meeting to listen. And and to care about this position, to care about what's going on in our community because you know. Our our governor and our legislators are doing a great job. I'm praying for this next election cycle because I think we're going to do so well. And so I there's I have hope for great things coming even for our nation. And I think. I I'm praying that people are waking up to what's happening locally. And so I appreciate you caring about what's happening. Locally, right here at home, to be able to make an impact in our students and. Students, teachers, administrators, in our school system so that we can have the best school system and so that we can give children. What they need, which is a good education because, you know, that's going to affect our community as a whole and every. Every class that graduates gra- is graduating students who. Need to have the ability to be productive and competent citizens. They need to understand and love our country. And right now, our system is not teaching them to love our country. And I have the privilege in my class because of what I teach. To teach and instill those things in my classroom, but we need to do that as a district. We need to have. The opportunity to make sure that our children are graduating from our schools, loving our schools and being. And being grateful for the privilege that they do have because we have the privilege to live in a nation that is the best nation in the world. And we have the privilege to live in a community that is a great community. And I see. The potential for it to even be better when we're doing what we need to do for our kids to educate them the right way. And so thank you for listening. I am looking forward to the opportunity to being able to serve and I'm I'm very appreciative for. Other politicians who have supported, who are supporting me, pastors who are supporting me. People in our community, community members who are supporting me. And really, I don't have, I though I don't have the support of. The the teachers unions, I do have support of people that to me are. The leaders in our community that that are important. And so. So thank you for your time. Thank you for listening and I hope to get your support.
Thank you so much for your time as well. So what's going to happen now is we are going to, I guess, thank you for your time and. And ask you to sign off and then the people who are on the call are going to discuss a little bit. I guess about where we're going to go from here and everything and hopefully we'll have a decision for you and for Jen. Next week.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.